This conference will now be recorded.
So it's six o'clock. So we'll call to, we'll call the honorary select board to order on October 24th. It's actually 6:01 and Frank Abbott and I are here in town hall. And Susan, I believe you're joining us remotely.
Yep, I am joining you remotely. Sorry to be ill. It wasn't good timing, but I didn't want to. God knows, I hope I didn't infect anyone last night. I sure didn't want to take another stab at it.
Yeah.
I sound a little froggy, but should be okay.
Um, we're gonna move things around a little bit here and sign the loan documents. So I believe this is the total amount that we're borrowing. Eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. At an interest rate of four point seventy zero percent.
What thing does it say? It does say somewhere. May not be on the first page. That's never mind, I'll get it.
Um, Greenfield Cooperative Bank.
Good idea.
So if you do that out, you can probably figure out how much we owe next year.
I can tell you what the minimum pay downs.
Okay.
This year will be seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty for the library, sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven for the tandem axle and zero. How much, what did you say? Sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven.
For the tandem axle.
The tandem axle, seventy thousand. These are just the minimum principal pay downs. Oh, okay. And zero for the five fifty. He says, she said, any renewals after June 2025 will require pay downs. And then the interest will be in October, thirty-two thousand, zero eighty-five, seventy-five for the library, tandem axle, four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-three cents. And the five fifty, fifty-six, thirty-six, fourteen. But you can pay down more. Yeah.
So I would move that the select board approve this. I'll start over.
One second.
Is there any other discussion or questions? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so that's three yeses. So now we have a little bit to sign and then a little bit for Chris to sign off on us.
Do you need me to come in to sign it?
It's after we leave. Is that the majority of the select board?
Yeah, I think it'll be okay because the director's gonna come tomorrow morning to pick these up in person.
Okay.
So I guess if you take the minimum principal pay downs and add the interest we owe, that would be our minimum, minimum. Pretty much sure, but we also have discussed going not one-year notes.
And she did say that on the tandem axle, we could reduce that payment if we go a longer useful life than five years, which I just wanted to double check with Jim, but I'm pretty sure that hasn't.
At least a ten-year life.
Ten, fifteen. The thing is, I wouldn't even bother. Well, it depends on where we all are headed with this, but I wouldn't bother to the extent that we're aggressively paying down the five fifty. We didn't borrow anything this year because we bought the truck free cash.
Yeah, but aren't we doing one of the things for the firehouse?
Was it Rescue Nine?
Yeah.
Replacement that we borrow?
Wow.
Yeah. And then we don't, you don't owe principal for well, we just need to seal as well. I have to, I have to take them in, yeah. Uh, twenty-fourth, correct? Let, just take the ones that need the seal. It only needs a seal where it says it needs a seal, right?
But if you want to, you know, over seal one last time.
Doesn't cost.
Just in case.
It doesn't cost an adventure.
Then I don't have to text you saying, please come back.
Do you want me to do every page then?
No, no, the ones that have yours in it, Ron.
Okay, got it, got it.
Seal it out, get too crazy.
One more. Take these three, I'll be right back. Thank you. That's a good thing. Um, I think if it's all right with everyone, we'll deal with the community center grant proposal next since we have people present here. So Dennis Lynch, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Dennis Lynch. I'm joined by Lori Shore, Chair of the Community Center Committee. And we're here tonight to support that grant application for a cultural council facilities. Actually, it's a cultural facilities grant from the state for up to two hundred thousand dollars. I have to say that we're still in the midst of getting estimates. But it's very possible we could approach that amount. It's a one-to-one match, so they will match whatever we put up. And given the fact that the town has already put the ARPA funds, the two, I believe, are around eighty-two or eighty-three thousand dollars. Federal funds, they can be used as a local match. And the town is also, through the annual town meeting, a couple of three years ago, appropriated, I believe, around twenty-nine thousand for the lighting at the community center. So the objective would be to basically not only see if we could see funding for, let's say, the lighting, but also the pavilion, which is the main driving item for this grant application. So we've been looking at the pavilion, the lighting, and the expansion of the building for one additional bathroom, which is required by the local building inspector, plumbing inspector, I should say. So we'd like to bundle that into a package and hopefully the, the grant application will be completed before December fourteenth, seventeenth, excuse me.
Just to touch on a few of the things that you said.
Sure.
I think the select board, I, I know that I've dropped the ball a little bit on the community center long-term plan that you proposed. We had some discussions about the pavilion and the plumbing variance, and then you came back to us with a very helpful, thought-out, long-term plan, and I haven't really taken the time to digest it. I wonder if with all these moving pieces, it wouldn't be best to have a joint meeting of the select board and maybe the community center committee or members who want to come. I know Mark Andrews has been heavily involved. And maybe it's just due to my own lack of a clear path going forward in my mind, but I'd like it if we could work on that. And I think that this grant is right in line with those plans, but before writing the grant and saying how much the town can put up for a match, I think we might want to have a discussion because in the past few months, I believe you got the plumbing variance, the conditional upon
The prior director was successful in getting that.
We didn't need a variance. They just said as long as the local Board of Health is okay, with the authorities were okay. They wanted nothing to do with it, so we didn't need a variance.
Okay. I know that there was some lighting down my national grid and it actually didn't cost any money, so there, there's twenty-nine thousand dollars from years ago that is specifically allocated to lighting, so if there was any desire to use it for any other purpose. Naturally, what we would do is because the lighting project has been done, is at the end of the year, we would not encumber, or we wouldn't roll forward the special article and the money would just dump into next year's free cash. But what we could do, if we wanted to, is vote at a town meeting to allocate it to a bathroom or some other use, but we can't go ahead and do that without without a town meeting vote, because town meeting voted twenty-nine thousand to light it, as I, as I understand it.
We, we still do need lighting. The lighting at the end of the driveway is non-existent.
Sure.
You just drive right by it at night, so we definitely need lighting there, and the pavilion needs lighting. So there is a lighting component in this. I don't know if that would cost twenty-nine thousand dollars, but but lighting is part of the package.
Yeah.
Is Mark putting that lighting on his drawings?
I don't know.
Because, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna get numbers together, you know.
Oh, sure, on the site plan.
Yeah, on the site plan work, you know, that needs to be, it needs to be put in there, show, so, well.
So would, would the plan, Lori, would you say that the plan is to get engineered plans and put them out to bid, I guess?
For the whole package, I, I believe. I think that's, that's what we're looking at. That seemed to make the most sense, which would involve not only the pavilion, but the, the bathroom and the lighting and additional parking. We're going to need that too. I mean, hopefully, that's not such a big deal. We can use the field at the bottom of the, of the hill for very large events. But we originally requested, I believe, seventeen parking spaces when we built the community center, and I think we got seven. So it would be nice if that upper area were graded in such a way that we could have additional parking spaces up there.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, big picture here and everything we have going on, if you combine, it depends on how the playground all comes out, but hopefully we'll know soon what that cost and how many ARPA, exactly how many ARPA funds are available. I don't think the costs of the playground, it was pretty set in stone.
Contract was, yeah, the additional was the dumpster and stuff, which I don't think we used up to.
But I think, so I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty to ninety thousand in ARPA, eighty thousand to be conservative. And if, if we do allocate the lighting money at a town meeting for some for lighting and some for a more general building project, because it would be hard to separate out the lighting if we put the whole thing out of it, we're talking a hundred a hundred and nine thousand, and if we double that with this grant, I'm just theorizing here, year around two eighteen. It, would the project come in at two eighteen? I don't know. I don't, I, like, I'm not a, a construction estimator. But I think that it would be worth revisiting that and formulating a plan as we move forward, because certainly if we can double the money that we have set aside towards community center projects, I think that's an awesome thing. But I just want to make sure that we, we have a clear plan going forward of what the steps are. That way, when you apply for the grant, you know, and maybe it's a situation where we say, we know a hundred and nine thousand dollars isn't gonna cut it, but if we put up, if we put forward a hundred and fifty thousand and doubled that with the grant
Three hundred thousand.
To three hundred, if that got us where we need to be, maybe if we had a special town meeting, we might consider putting down the warrant, but it would be good to know sooner than later in terms of applying for the grant.
Yeah, well, in terms of the grant, I'd have to know that number before we submit it in December.
You have to know what, the whole project?
The number.
Yes.
But it's, you're, you're somewhat dependent on Mark's drawings.
Right.
Because, and, and Mark's license, he's got it, his career with this.
Right.
So, you know, the last time I saw the drawings, he had it pretty far along on what you need to do, but I think we need to get other sets of eyes on it than we think about the lighter there and stuff like that, because you start doing the transport fees or whatever, it becomes expensive. So, you know, I'm not sure where Mark, I know that at one time he said he was trying to get people to give him some cost estimates, how you have with your budget that's for.
Yeah.
There's different ways to do it.
And that's all I would need for the grant applications, cost estimates.
Yeah, well, we need to, I think what Justin suggested, we sort of need to get up, set up eyes, everybody look at it, and we get clear instructions on what, what we're gonna, what we need to be done, you know.
And remember that soon, because
I, I, you know, oh, late next week, but I mean, we can get it done. I mean, you can start writing the structure lines and then we plug the numbers in. You, you could start on the grant. You're close enough to know, understand what they want to accomplish.
What if there's major changes to the design? I know one of the things that Jim brought up as a concern, and I can't remember, but the last design was the, we had talked about the Bilco door there, the and he's not in favor of having that removed, because
Oh, the, to the basement, the utility doors?
I think that's what we had originally talked about, was removing that and putting the bathroom there. I guess, just before Mary had left, she asked him to bring down some wood in the basement. Right. And you can't, he said you can't easily get there from the inside. You need that Bilco door to access the basement if the furnace were to, you know, you need somehow to get it out of there. He really wants to recommend against
Well, let's get people in the room. We just, we have the skill sets. We just need to get everybody in there and do it so you can
Yeah, you know, about, you know, six weeks, five or six weeks to come up with an number for the budget, so.
Well, if it, I mean, I want to see some, some numbers and so that we can do something that makes sense, because we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we go for one thing and then we're kind of, we're kind of stuck. If, if it ends up being for this, for the purposes of this grant and the ARPA funds, which are more flexible than most of the funds that we usually deal with, if it ends up being what makes the most sense is to shoot for a bathroom and double our ARPA money with this, then we'd have something to show for it, and it would be one step in the process of improving that building and the property. I don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we don't, where we can't get anything done.
So what, what were you saying there, Justin? Excuse me. To use which money for the bathroom, to get the bathroom done?
Well, as I understand the grant, it's kind of a map, it's a match, so whatever we put forward, they, they'll match if we get the grant.
Right.
The ARPA funds, fortunately, we have a lot of flexibility with. If we, so we can do whatever makes sense, but we can't do anything without cost estimates. We can't plan for anything without with numbers that we, that we don't know, and I understand it comes with the construction and design that we'll have to work through some of these things, but the, the sooner we can get good prevailing wage estimates, the, the sooner we can put, you know, put the money to use and maybe match the money, which I think everyone's in favor of, right? But it would just be good to know how far those are eighty-plus thousand dollars that we have set aside from ARPA go. If we have that twenty-nine thousand dollars from lighting, does it go to lighting? Could we transfer at a town meeting to, to go towards a more general building project if town meeting supported that? But we can't, it's hard to, it's hard to say without more figures. And then look, if, if it came, in my personal opinion, I can't speak for the other members of the board, but if it came down to a situation where we needed ten, twenty thousand more dollars to knock out a few big projects and it was going to be matched, it would, I think, make a lot of sense to get that money together this winter, because we can tell town meeting, this is our opportunity to pay half the price of these projects and get them done. So that's why I'd like to see some numbers. It's hard to move forward without them.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're working on it.
So the potential timing would be meeting next week?
Yeah, I mean, I think full scheme ahead on, on getting numbers together and working on design and running things by Jim and getting everyone on board, getting as many eyes on, as possible.
Sure.
So that everyone's on the same page and we're, we're moving forward together. And because this is probably, you know, this is a good opportunity to, to double the funds that we have available, if possible.
So it sounds like we have the go-ahead to start doing some of the background work on the, on the grant and, but not, not to submit it obviously until we
Yeah, I mean, I think if it's a few hours, I think that we should meet next week, and if Dennis wants to put in a few hours of continuing to research the grant while we're getting estimates and working on design, that'd be good. I mean, this is a good, this is a really good opportunity. That's why we have a grant writing budget and, but I wouldn't, me personally, I wouldn't say, you know, go ahead and write the grant for the pavilion, lighting and parking or the bathroom, because I just, it's, it's too hard to say at this point in time without numbers.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want to be, you know, get to a point where we can't make a decision, and then we're running up against the submission date. So there has to be some commitment to get to that point where we can get legitimate estimates.
Yeah, well, I'm on board
Okay.
to move for, to move toward, I think it helps in any case to have
Oh, sure.
numbers. So I'm on board of, of getting the ball rolling and meeting next week and kind of moving forward aggressively on this until, until that deadline or until, you know, we come, we get to a better decision, but right now I would just say it's still in the, still in the getting estimates process, running things by Jim.
Running by Jim, get Mark in here to talk about it.
So how will we set up this meeting?
It will be next. Do we have any meeting? Do, do we have any meetings on here?
Petri treat there.
Yeah.
What day is Halloween?
Tuesday night?
So it's Hal, so it is technically Halloween? I don't think so. It, would it be, it won't be a scary meeting, so it won't really. Are we not supposed to meet on Halloween? It's not a holiday.
Except if you're here, they're gonna come in and give you candy.
Well, the police will be set up out here.
Is anyone opposed to meeting on Halloween? Susan?
I'm fine with it.
So next Tuesday at six?
Okay, my, my only little hesitation is I love to see the kids come to the house and I'd like to give them candy, but I'm sure Gary can handle that in my absence.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, if you don't mind.
You got the first hour. That's true, that's true, but that, yeah, they're, yeah, that's true. You're right. And they usually all do come right from the library out, so, okay, I can, I can live with this.
My, my, so I just summing up here, it sounds like there's four parts to the project potentially. The pavilion, the bathroom, the parking and the lighting. And that we, you're looking for greater clarity on how those pieces would look as well as cost estimates? Is that what you're looking for, Justin?
Yeah, I mean, I frankly, I can't volunteer the highway department, but they've done a really good job on a few projects recently, and they might, I think they did some of the initial work on the parking.
Up there?
Yeah.
They, they did, I think they did also.
They, they might.
Completely different crew, but.
Yeah, completely. I mean, they might, that might be the kind of thing that we could work with them as, as they are, as their schedule allows, as Jim and, and the highway department's schedule allows. We'd have to figure that out, obviously. We'd have to ask him if he's, if they're capable, which I, I'm fairly certain they're capable, if they're able to help with that. Susan, I think your assessment is more or less correct. We have the pavilion, lighting, parking, bathroom, and we're trying to get some, some designs to look, some designs to really look at and run by various departments and some numbers behind those to figure out how to best allocate our funds to tackles.
Right, I guess I'm just wondering how for the building parts that aren't likely to come out of our operations, how do we get, can we get numbers for those between now and then? Or can we lose in time for, for Dennis to use them?
Well, Mark has the drawings. I know that a while back he was working on trying to get the numbers. I don't know where he was on that.
Yeah, I, I've been asking him about that.
Yeah, so he, you know, that, but I think the bigger issue is what Melissa brought up is if the bathroom's there, how do you get access to the basement because furnace and other needs. So we need to get the drawings and get them in front of people and say, whatever. You, you, I mean, there's, there's ways to get around it, but always, what does it cost you?
Right.
So, but, so I think that's why, you know, we meet next week, Mark comes in with his drawing, he updates us, and we get Jim up to speed on it too.
Susan, I think it's a good question. What is the timeframe? I'm not expecting next week to know, you know, the bathroom's gonna cost eighty-two thousand dollars and, and the pavilion is gonna cost a hundred and forty thousand dollars, but I think if we meet next week and have some discussions, maybe are able to look at some drawings, maybe get some feedback from Jim, maybe get some initial numbers for some stuff. It would be a step in the right direction. And like I said, I feel bad because I, we received a long-term planning, we had the discussion about the plumbing variance, and then it's been kind of on my list of ongoing projects, but I haven't devoted a lot of time and attention to it. But with the grant opportunity, now I think it's the time to get some long-term planning done and make a, a capital plan for the community center. And I'm just really curi, I mean, I don't know if we can do some of the projects, all of the projects with the funds that we have available, but
Yeah.
it'd be interesting to.
If I could say, the, the main thrust is, of course, the pavilion and other things relate to that specifically, the bathroom. So if those two things, to make it a competitive grant, we have to, it's a cultural grant, so we have to have the pavilion as the centerpiece of this application. So there's, and, and I think we have a better understanding as the centerpiece of this application. So there's, uh, and and I think we have a better understanding of the, let's call it a ballpark, of the pavilion cost. Other things could be tangential to that, and they could be addressed at another time if we can get estimates.
So was there any requirement as far as the pavilion goes of, I remember hearing at one point in time, don't quote me, that there was, there needed to be a five-year plan regarding the bathroom? If the pavilion was to be built?
We did that. Yeah, we we do have the the long-term plan.
Yeah.
Um, so, but then it turns out we didn't really need it because the plumbing inspector, the state plumbing inspector said this is not my department.
So, but that's that's my question is, if part of my concern with pavilion was to have an unfunded five-year down the road mandate of saying we need a bathroom, but we don't necessarily have the funds to speak for it. But if that's not a requirement and we can use porta potties during the summer when the pavilion is used.
Well, no, we do need a bathroom. According to our local plumbing inspector, we need a bathroom.
Within five years?
That that's that's what we talked about, between three and five years. Um, so there's there's no getting around the bathroom, unfortunately. But in the meantime, we can use porta potties until the bathroom is constructed.
And for lighting, other than pavilion lighting, are you talking about a light out by the road to shine on the sign? That kind of a light?
Something fairly substantial, you know, to uh, so you can see where you're going. I mean, you can't see where the driveway is. It's it's pitch black there. Um, so it would be nice if there was some sort of lighting, and I don't know anything about lighting to be able to even say what would be appropriate. But I think that you would probably need a little bit more than just the sign.
I I'm just gonna say, it seems like we want, I I can say that I think it would be great for Dennis to go forward with writing the proposal. Um, Jim, before it's finalized, we'll need to have a, like, I agree, I think the meeting you're proposing is a great idea. Um, but I don't see any reason why we can't suggest he goes ahead with writing proposal and as the figures become available. Um, and we make a clear decision about which parts of the project will fit in the funding we are likely to have or get. He can pare it down if he needs to.
Yeah, I I I think I'm, I agree, Susan. I just think that we should really meet next week, uh, so that we're all on the same page about what, not that we necessarily have to decide next week, but so that we get on the same page about what what we have funding for and how we're moving forward in the in the medium-range plan at the community center.
I oh, I was, I agree with you about the meeting, totally. I just, I feel like Lori and Dennis wanted greater clarity on whether we were supporting going forward with the grant, and I just want to put on the table that I'm certainly in favor of it.
I'm in favor of of the grant, and I hope that we can work in the scope. And as I said before, I just regret that I haven't been more on top of it myself. Um, and and paying more attention and devoting more time and energy to it. Um, after the initial discussions of the pavilion and the plumbing discussion, other than that, I haven't, I've thought about it, but it's just been on on the back burner for me personally. So why don't why don't we move forward with the grant with the scope to be, with the scope of the grant, to be determined based on future meetings and discussions of of cost estimates and designs?
So are you recording a few hours or eighty-eight hours to work on this grant?
I think Dennis, I mean.
Eighty-eight hours is just an upset figure, not to exceed.
Yeah.
If you don't get all the information you need next week and it's, we just, and those advocate here, and we can't move forward because we can't meet the requirements of the grant, I mean, do you want Dennis spending thirty hours writing something that we may not be able to submit?
No, but I I trust that Dennis will, I trust Dennis.
Sure.
And I, I think that we'll just need to have a discussion with an aggressive timeline about what we're looking for about the scope of the grant. So that's why we'll meet next week and have that discussion, um, whatever the outcome may be.
To start.
Yeah.
So so I'll hold off?
Well, I think continue to, my point of view would be to continue to research um, or learn about or maybe begin preliminary.
Yeah.
You know, take a look at what you need to do to fill it out. I think the goal should be regardless to to try to take advantage of this match. In my opinion, um, and if that ends up being for just the pavilion and not for the other items, then maybe that's what it becomes, but
Yeah.
but uh, at least, at least we will have got, used it.
If I could just suggest, uh, and I don't know what the timeframe for it will be, but um, having two years of uh, audits of the town would be something to work on immediately.
So they didn't do it last year and they haven't, they're they're gonna be two fiscal years behind, just so you know. Fiscal year twenty-two, I believe, is the last one.
But we are on, this is for annual.
We are, but but he did not, he's not doing, sorry, I gotta get my dates right here. He is not doing one for fiscal year twenty-two because he felt we were in such good shape and he's gonna do fiscal year twenty-three, we're hoping to get that done in the next month or so. Um, but he he said that because we're in such good financial shape and we haven't had a lot of management um recommendations on there, he doesn't feel the need to do every year.
So what about the money that we appropriate every year? Do we?
It it was rolled over on the off chance that we were going to do it, but um, it'll just go back to free cash.
At the end of this year?
Right.
Interesting.
So it could be an annual audit or for a year that's um, not been done, perhaps like twenty-two, it could be.
Fiscal year twenty-one would be the most current. So twenty and twenty-one, so that's three years behind.
Twenty, okay, I'll I'll have to look at the uh,
What's the submission date, Dennis?
Uh, it's mid-December.
So there's the possibility the latest audit may be done by then?
I wouldn't hold your breath. Just knowing how long it's taking to write the reports in the past, I wouldn't hold your breath.
This is twenty-three.
Fiscal year twenty-three, right?
I remember when we got twenty, I mean, they're always significantly after the end of the fiscal year.
And he usually doesn't do them until the spring. We're trying to get into his schedule now because we're so small and it should be easy.
But yeah, I think go go forward on it, knowing that the scope is to be determined. And hopefully we can move forward.
Okay, and then we'll meet next week?
We'll meet next week. Um, we can meet at six or we could do six-thirty uh, to
Whatever.
Well, you wanna just come in at six-thirty?
Sure.
Um, we'll plan on doing six-thirty next week, community center. And then you can come in with Dennis or and or Mark and or anyone who wants to come. If you're gonna have a quorum, we post a meeting for the community center committee, if you want to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think it's, it would be, it'd be good.
In the meantime, I can speak with the state regarding the annual report to see what they will accept. They seem to be um, very proactive in helping communities meet their requirements.
Yes.
So I can report back at that meeting.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you. We'll see you next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, uh, we will go back to being in order. The manual for elected and appointed multi-member bodies. So we got some answers from Donna. Section three. Donna says that both the board with a vacancy and the select board should vote on the appointment.
Her, the the changes based on her comments seemed fairly straightforward, and I thought they pretty much addressed all the issues that we had.
Yeah, after one week's notice, the vacancy will be posted, which is just about how we've been doing it and and filled by the remaining members border committee. I think instead of a comma, it'd be more clear to have remaining members of the border committee with the vacancy and the select board who will vote by roll call.
Which line are we talking about here?
Page four. The border committee in which the vacancy accor- occurs shall within one month notify the select board in writing of the vacancy. This is the second to the last paragraph.
Yep, yep, okay.
After one week's notice, the vacancy will be posted and filled by the remaining members of the board or committee with the vacancy and the select board who will vote by roll call.
Right.
You're just on members of the board and the board committee.
Yeah, I think that's more clear.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Actually, I think it should be after one week's notice, the vacancy will be posted and filled by vote of the remaining members of the board or committee with the vacancy and the select board who will vote by roll call. So if there's a uh, a vacancy in the finance committee. Oh, actually, it needs to be different. After one week's notice, the vacancy will be posted. Um, it should really be all worked around because the select board will advertise the position, accept applicants through the the first sentence of that should really be later on. The first sentence should be the border committee in which the vacancy accor- occurs shall within one month notify the select board in writing of the vacancy. After one week's notice, the select board will advertise the position, accept applicants through the appointment request application, which can be found here. The vacancy will then be filled by vote of the remaining members of the border committee with the vacancy and the select board who will vote by roll call. And then that last sentence.
That sounds like a good plan. I like it. It's got good flow. And clarity.
So you moved the second sentence to first?
Yes.
And then everything else stayed the same?
No, um.
Border committee in which the vacancy occurs, so within one month notify the select board in writing of the vacancy. When a vacancy occurs, is that the next sentence?
No, just that, you're right, except delete when a vacancy occurs and do after one week's notice comma, the select board will advertise the position, that sentence. And then that sentence ends. And then
Can I ask a question?
After one week's notice? Oh, wait, no, we've already done that.
The board, I mean, like, very often when there's a vacancy and the trustees will come up with somebody. And can we, when we notify you, tell you that we have somebody that's interested in that position that we know of?
Well, you have to vote by roll call, or you have to vote not by roll call.
We would vote on it at a meeting that, you know, we were gonna suggest it, you know, Frank to fill that position. And then bring that to you.
I have to say, we've not always, we haven't, we've hardly done this the same two times in a row.
And we should have the option A, option B and option C?
No, I think that we should have this, but we have some established procedures. Some boards frankly have taken more of a role in helping the select board. Uh, we've had two vacancies on the finance committee, which since I've been around. In both cases, I believe the finance committee recommended a a short list. And then the select board chose from that short list. The li- the library board of trustee trustees usually makes a recommendation of one person. And then votes it, and the select board votes it. In many other cases, the border commission hasn't had any kind of a say, and the select board just does it itself. So I think the general gist of it is that the border committee will have a say and vote, and then the select board will have a vote. But to speak to your question, I mean, do we have to go through the process of posting the vacancy?
We did with the finance committee.
Yeah, we did. I think that's probably the best way to do it. And then we'll be consistent. And then if there's a vacancy on the on the finance committee or the library board, um, people can fill out the appointment request form. Submit their things, and then the library trustees can review, make their choice, and then the select board will finalize it. You know, it's a really weird thing, and I've seen instances where people, select boards don't agree that finance committees are weighing in and finance committees don't like uh, in a neighboring town, just a couple of years ago, I think the chair of an elected multi-member body resigned because the select board went ahead and appointed uh, someone to fill a vacancy without running it by them first.
I see that happening.
Yeah.
Because somebody could be on that, you just know it's not going to fit your board and and your operation or it'd be destruct- a disruptive person.
So I think with that being said. Yes.
The border committee in which the vacancy occurs shall within one month notify the select board in writing of the vacancy. After one week's notice, the select board will advertise a position and accept applicants through the appointment request application, which can be found here. The vacancy will be filled by vote of the remaining members of the border committee with the vacancy and the select board who will vote by roll call from the rest of the team.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Both 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 entities do vote on it, but you could throw in some, well, then we could say, like, this person, we we know this person, you know?
Is there some ambiguity remaining? There is. But if it gets to that point, we'll just have to consult and counsel. I mean, what happens if the library board of trustees votes, you know, to appoint Joe Smith, and then the select board doesn't act on it or votes no? I don't know what happens.
Yeah, but which who has?
But that's why we have town council.
Yeah, which is the which is the deciding town.
Yeah, we can't, we can't deal with it all here. Uh, you know, if we wanna deal with all here, we just write Mass General law, which exists, so. And you have lawyers to look at it.
Okay.
Um, I think it gives, is a good overview, though, and and it sets up a process if we always have. It was at the only section. Any other comments, questions on the manual for all elected and appointed multi-member bodies?
I'd like to see us put this sucker to bed.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the manual for all elected and approved multi-member bodies.
As amended, second.
As amended.
Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so that's a unanimous approval. Now the employee handbook.
I just have one. I wanna look at it one more time before I send it to you.
Um, Town administrator evaluation form and next steps. Town administrator evaluation form and next steps.
So I did make the changes we talked about last week and sent those in. I'm assuming you guys got them. Basically, all I did was, yeah, I pretty much just took the descriptions of the numbers that Sophia had come up with for the new one, because I liked that description and put that in there for the numbers and took out the tallying pieces.
Blue is me and red is Frank.
Okay, so forms are due to the HR director. We might, we might need to see where we're at. We set a deadline of all employee reviews of November 1st to December 15th. So we, I think Susan, all the changes you made are good.
I just, I didn't put a final date in for obvious reasons.
Yeah, and even the process, I mean, we're gonna have to have that discussion when we talk human resources director. But I would approve it just conditional on that first paragraph on the cover page, or the only paragraph on the cover page about date and process and depending on where we're at. But other than that, I mean, I think we can just approve it conditional upon a date and process on that cover page. I would change is red, I don't know who red is, but promptly respond on page five. Or prompt response.
Page five.
What prompt is going to vague in years past with previous select board members? We've always said that I have 24 hours to respond to someone.
I've always expressed, I think I've said before that I think 24 hours is a very tight deadline and I would
I never thought 24.
And I was more in favor of like three days.
Maybe we could put that in it because prompt to you might mean something different than prompt to Susan. And, you know, I don't, wouldn't want that person to get a bad mark because Susan expects it in 24 hours and you expect it in three days.
Yeah.
I mean, I think responsive to requests and questions from citizens, you know, says enough. I don't think the second sentence needs to be there. I mean, this is a professional position we're talking about, I think they.
It's just as vague, but I'm fine, I'm fine with just the first sentence.
Which item are we talking about here?
Page five top.
Page five top. I mean, I think the other thing is, I don't think 24, 36 hour, or how many is three days? 72?
Yes.
Isn't, it's not one size fits all because a request could be simple and quick and it could be quicker expectation and it could be long and thorough and there might be a longer expectation. But I'm fine.
What numbered thing is this under? Citizen relations?
Number six.
Okay.
That starts with page four.
Citizen relations.
Yeah, it's just possible I'm looking at an older version. Because I don't have it. Prompt.
Oh, yeah, you don't have.
Prompt isn't in there.
I think responsive, let's, how do you define responsive? I thought there was a matter of timeliness to responsive itself.
I mean, no matter what word you use in there, it's always going to be vague.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take the second sentence out, so we'll just read responsive to requests and questions from citizens. Did you get that off just Susan?
I'm sorry, again.
Not me now, not before.
I'm sorry? What did you ask?
I will send it to you because I apparently did not.
Oh, okay, that would be great.
The only other change I see other than inconsistent periods is in number nine fiscal management in addition to bullet number three. Uses historical data to help determine budget numbers. Page two instructions, I think it's previously. Other than that, I don't have any further comments.
The next question is how we want to proceed now that we have an evaluation form. I mean, I are we going ahead and evaluating the TA and proceeding from there, or I just don't really have a sense of clarity about what process the board wants to follow.
So I think the town administrator should definitely be evaluated in the same timeframe as all of the employees and department heads, November 1 to December 15. If we have the assistance of an HR director, which I hope we do, I'm not familiar with the responses to solicitations of proposals. We'll determine how that process plays out. Boards that don't have an HR director, the board chair or another designate often plays a role. My understanding of what Sophia did last year also was just individual performance evaluations are deposited into the file with responses or meeting summaries of meetings. So maybe an HR director, maybe there's no compilation. But that kind of depends on our HR director situation.
Have we sent out a request for proposals or anything in that vein?
Before, I mean, before we go too far, just to finish up the big picture, there's also been a request from Melissa to discuss whether the board will be soliciting applications for the town administrator position. So that is something that we could discuss and make a decision on tonight as well. Unless it was going to be conditional on the performance evaluation, which would depend on either setting a process where the board does the evaluation or having an HR director do the evaluation. So there's some there's a couple of decisions and part of it depends on if we have an HR director. I know in looking for the performance evaluation that we used last year, I came across an email that we had sent to Donna that laid out the process that we, that we used last year. And she said it was an excellent process and that's what they recommend to boards. In many cases. That's not to say there aren't other processes. I think, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, was it Great Barrington sending before having an HR director, I don't know what they do now, but sending evaluations to the chair or another designate who compiled the performance evaluations, which were then a summary evaluation was considered by the board. I know that's one way that boards do it.
I, I am actually not sure what they did about compiling the separate responses as I understood it from talking to Mark. And this is what I'm remembering from last year. It was often the case that one or, like, they have five members, but one or two of them would talk to him about the review outside of, you know, in a private meeting, but I believe they actually do his review in open meeting.
Yes, I mean, that, that tracks with my understanding.
I don't know whether they collate it or they just leave the various reviews separate. I never asked that.
My recollection and what unacceptable way of doing it is to have a board member create a summary evaluation. The other, I think, primary way of doing it is having, is submitting the forms to an HR director to create a summary evaluation. An alternative that I believe is legal, but we would double check with town council is to have each board member submit his or her own evaluation and there'd be no summary, because I think that's partly what Sophia did last year anyway.
How was it done last year? I thought it was done each, each select board member appraised or separately, and there was no summary.
There was a summary.
There was supposed to be a summary.
But who wrote that summary? Was it the select board?
No, it was supposed to be Sophia and I'm not sure that a summary, a real summary ever really was created.
It was, because I signed off on it. It just wasn't, we, you guys had decided it wasn't going to become a public document. So after, after you all wrote them, there was some individual meetings with a couple of you. And then she summarized based on those additional meetings, a final document.
Yeah, my problem is frankly, Frank, I have been back and forth with Sophia about this for the past couple of weeks and don't have good clarity. Because there is, there is a summary, as I understand it, there's a summary of a follow-up meeting and a response to an evaluation, but I don't think that it was summarized in any meaningful way. But rather individual performance reviews were
I mean, to me, it seems
Deposited.
convoluted. Is she summarizing what you guys were saying or is she summarizing from what she got from the appraisals? What she got?
Yeah, I think that there was then we also did 360 reviews last year.
My sense was that it was a summary of all of the 360 reviews from the board and committee chairs as well as the three reviews from the select board members.
Can I, can I just, since we're talking about the process and the reason and having an HR person, if you're going to continue with that process, Sophia has said that she will consult here because she's familiar with the situation. She did it last year. So you would have an HR director, but I think in the conversations I've had with Susan and Sophia, if you're going to advertise the position, I'm not sure there's any reason to do an evaluation.
I think, I mean, I think that we would still stay the course with the annual evaluation.
So you won't be advertising the position?
No, we could, we can have that discussion, but I think that we would do an annual evaluation regardless because we're on schedule to do it. And regardless of who is the town administrator after the current contract, it's good to have the data. I'm not in favor of Sophia doing the composite evaluation. Mostly because and maybe she can figure this out, but mostly because I've been unable to get clarity on what exactly she did last year. I thought that I had clarity and then I followed up with her in the past few weeks and she hasn't, there's unanswered questions at this time.
Are you looking for copies of the documents?
Yes.
Okay, so she's not sharing those with you because it would be a violation of the open meeting law to share opinions of the other board members?
Well, she did share with me performance evaluations and follow-up documents, because I asked for the personnel file. But there's, like I said, I have remaining questions that she has yet to follow up on, and I had another and I have another concern that I was just going to because she wasn't going to be working anymore, I wasn't really going to raise, but I, I'm not. I wouldn't prefer that method of moving forward.
That method is that she summarizes?
Yeah, that she, yeah, I wouldn't prefer that. She'd be involved. But maybe that's not you know, maybe that's something that the board would have to discuss and maybe you know, if the board desired to have a full discussion, it's possible that it should be an executive session based on certain confidential, certain reasons. But that's neither here nor there. The board, I mean, that would only be, in my opinion, if the board wanted to proceed with Sophia doing the performance evaluations. I have reasons that I don't support that. But if, if we want to move forward in another direction, I don't think that it's necessary to flush those out. So.
I'm not, could you be clearer on what the other directions would be?
Either to pursue the board handling the performance evaluation itself
of the TA.
Of the town administrator through a compiled, through designating a board member who's responsible for compiling the evaluations or the board, if it's legal, which I think, I can't see why it wouldn't be, but we would double check the board submitting individual performance evaluations or having an interim or some kind of HR director that we follow the same process that we followed last year.
But is it realistic that you find somebody?
That and zero responses, just so you know.
Okay. So.
Ultimately, I feel like if we were to do them, I'm just kind of going down the list in my head. Imagining that we each submit a review and do them independently. In the end, I feel like there has to be an opportunity for us to grapple with whatever the, our group's opinion of performance is, because if on the table is keeping or not keeping the TA at the end of the contract, we have to have that discussion. We don't have to have it as part of that review, but we, it's gonna have to happen and it would seem like those documents would have to be part of that. So it seems like we need a process that allows us to share our opinions on this. Otherwise, there's no way to make an informed opinion at the end of the process.
Yeah, so I mean, I think what you're laying out is either having an HR director compile the evaluations and submit them to the board, or having the board members or having a designated board member compile the evaluations and then and I believe, you know, this is done in other towns, the board approves a composite evaluation.
So let me say back, you're saying select board does, each select board member does an evaluation. One of the select board members to compile it, the others can sign off on it or not sign off on it?
Well, in theory, you know, the composite evaluation would be fair, would be something that all the board members would approve. But Melissa requested and that, I think prior to having a performance evaluation or not, discussing Whether to accept other applicants. For the town administrator position.
The idea was put out there, so the, the person that made the idea must have a reason why they did that is the reason because. Well, I don't want to put your words out there. What was the reason that that was suggested and, and does the rest of the board members agree with that is what I'm asking. Is to vote on whether you were going to advertise the position. Cause I guess I would say if you, if you're making a contingent, if there's a concern about. Performance, I would question. Why there has been zero. Um, written documentation, verbal documentations about any kind of performance that would. Lead to that. Being the reason for that decision. So maybe friendship, I guess it was your idea.
Well, I didn't say it was definitive. I suggested it could be an option. You know, I don't know. You know, I don't know what your other appraisals were prior. Um, I will say we're at a stage where we should start talking about it. I would say the job description that we have recently approved is a lot different than the job description. That you have now.
I don't think it's different at all.
In our discussion.
But that's okay. I mean, if you think it's dramatically different, like as far as. Qualifications.
I mean, some of that is subjective about leadership ability and things of that nature about. I'd have to think about that. Um, I haven't seen it in front of me, so I, I have spent time looking at the old job description. I haven't looked at it recently, but. I think for, you know, the way that when I approached that job description, the new job description. You know, I looked at it, if I was appraising you, how would I use that old job description? And there was things that in my opinion, it was missing. And I think I told you in one of our Monday meetings. There's a lot of stuff that, that wasn't covered in that description. Well, I think we do.
But based on the current. I don't want to put words. I, I guess I'm asking the board to vote on whether you will be. Advertising the position or not. Since the idea was thrown out.
I think that, I mean, one, one reason to advertise it was that. The town has never advertised a full-time town administrator position and accepted. Applicants. And the, the performance evaluation is a. Is a different. Route is a different question. Um, but. Maybe on that basis alone, it'd be the due diligence of the town to advertise the full-time town administrator position. And interview qualified candidates. And then that would just ensure that the board is doing its due diligence. In. Advertising, recruiting. Um, and consistent and consistency. In recruiting. Then that decision could be made prior to. The results of the performance evaluation.
So I would ask, that's not the way that you've treated other positions. When, I'm sorry, it's always the library that gets picked on, but when, when the library director position went from. Part-time to the full-time hours, it wasn't advertised. A contract was renewed without any of that items. So I ask why. This position would be treated any different. I have a chart that I've made and.
Well, so, I mean, but the first thing is that the select board is not. Is separate from the library board.
But it's still a position in town and, and the, the, the select board is the ultimate appointing authority.
As I understand it, the library board of trustees is elected in. Their own authority, but.
I'd like to be heard.
In a second now. I, I think there's also. You know, some things have been done in the town. For in history or in the past. But there has been an emphasis in recent years on. Trying to be consistent and. Thorough. And. I could see that that would be. Lead toward advertising a full-time town administrator position and considering. Applicants. Don Coburn.
Yeah, you sound a bit like a lawyer tonight. Uh, you know, what's been going on here and that you're covering by legalistic talking. Is you've been after getting rid of Melissa for three years now, ever since you came to office. This has created a terrible atmosphere in town hall. And. What you don't have and never have had. Is any cause for that? Even your own letter that you proposed that wasn't adopted, didn't have cause for letting somebody go. Now, why do you post a position? You post a position not because of the possibility that there might be somebody else out there who's better than. The person who has the job. You post a position because the person isn't doing the job. If they're doing the job, we should not be the kind of town that even considers dismissing somebody who's doing a job. Doing it well, just because of the possibility that might be somebody else out there. It's time to move on with this. And settle your business with Melissa.
I don't agree, Don. I think that in the past. Two. Years and five months, I have tried to. Move the town in a. Direction of professionalism and accountability. And. Tried to create a civil environment. That's good for employees and residents alike. I have made missteps. In that time. And not everything that I've done has led to those goals, but I strive for them and I continue to strive for them. That's the reason why I ran for a seat on the board. It's because I wanted civility. There were unfortunately. A number of. Actors involved that didn't value civility. And. I've tried to. Promote transparency, accountability, professionalism, and like I said, on occasions I have failed. But those have been the goals and. I wouldn't agree with your assessment of my. Goals and actions in my two years and five months on the board. I think that. We have seen. Many positive results. Thankfully. We have a number of board members and employees and residents. Um, I can't take credit for. Any of it, you know, it's been a effort. But I would see this as another step. Towards those goals and not. Um. I wouldn't characterize it the, the, the way that you do. I think that unfortunately. Uh, deep distrust in government can be created. When leaders aren't civil and transparent and they don't. Follow the rules and maybe I follow the rules more than. Some people care for and that has its own. Negative effects, but. I have set out. Since I ran for the board to try to. Achieve those ideals and I'm still trying. And that's all I can respond to you on that.
I'm not going to respond to Don so much as I'd like to just put on the table, so. I. I have trouble with the idea. I, I recognize that. The original position that was advertised was halftime. That said, we have someone that's currently filling the position and I feel like. Unless we're making the decision to terminate the current employee, re-advertising is. A peculiar choice. Um, typically, my experience in hiring is that unless you're creating a new position. Or substantively changing a position and by that. Um, I mean, if we were going from town administrator to town manager, for example, which I personally don't think is appropriate for a town our size. But that would be an example of a change that I think was substantive. Um. That it's, I can't think of anyone I know that's been working at a job and without them being fired, they re-advertise the job. I, I cannot think of a single example in any field, anyone I've ever known that had that happen to them. I think it's a strange way to train an employee. Um, so, you know, I'm just sharing I, my personal perspective on this, but to me. The correct process would be to complete the review and if the person is. If the TA, if we find as a group that the TA is not. Um, rising to the level we need her to rise to, and we don't think that can be remediated. Then we have to make a decision to terminate her and hire somebody new and we need a transition plan from getting to one to the other. But if we don't find that, if we find that the TA's performance has been strong enough. And that we can create, I mean, I personally feel like she's made some, a lot of progress since I've been on the board. And I think that growing people is an important thing for, uh. For a talent where any employer to do. Um, then we need to make a plan for. Helping her to up her game in any areas where we don't think she's strong enough. But I, I don't think it's right to say, oh, well, your review was okay, but we're re-advertising the position. That is a peculiar choice to me. Um, and I. I don't feel comfortable with it. I don't feel it's respectful to this employee or any employee. To proceed like that.
Susan. Just briefly, I do think my expectation of the job description is. Is slightly different. I had some discussions during the evaluation process last. Year and I think the essence of it was. That the board needs. Basically to be a final check on things, a final review and not. Be as involved and there's different, people have different opinions on why the board has been. As involved as it has been. But. My sense is that we are, or what I'm looking for as a board member is a town administrator who basically. Tees up contracts for the board to sign. Um, who makes financial recommendations and, and. Advice and, and oversees kind of the day-to-day, so. You know, the board is a last check, but doesn't really involve on a day-to-day. Basis. Um, some people could say that the board's been over-involved. I know the HR director recently sent us an email saying as much. My point of view is part of the reason I've been. Involved is because I've been noticing things. That, that needed involvement. And that's not to say. You know, there, for many years Monterey has discussed about whether I'm a town administrator or not, and I think. For a long time, the board. Um, tried to get by with administrative assistant, but it's taxing on board members and prevents them from having a. Focus on the higher, um, the bigger picture. The three thousand feet view. Um, and I think it was to the detriment of the board and the town's functioning. And I just would like to see moving forward a board that. Can really be pretty hands-off and things will go smoothly. And don't need that level of oversight. So I do think I see it as a different job description and kind of what the expectations have been. And I did have a discussion as much. During, during last year's evaluation. Performance with the HR director and the town administrator. Explaining as much, but I feel that. I feel very strongly about that now.
I guess the only question I would ask is whether or not that, um. That situation, I, I sort of feel like part of it is a lack of trust on the part of the select board. Because if we don't actually empower the TA to do that. If we keep second guessing her or people keep going around her and coming directly to us, whether ever. Going through the proper process, we're creating a situation that. Is going to continue to create that problem. And I, I don't know that I have the answer, Justin, but I do feel like in part, we're responsible for creating that situation that you're describing. And I don't disagree with you. I think that there needs to be enough trust so that that person has the authority to act that way.
Um, I understand the point about enabling, but I, I think that there are. And I don't know if I should go into detail now, but times where things come to the board and they're still. In need of a lot of work. Just recently, like the municipal purpose loan. She. Coming to the board with that many errors and.
But I, I'd like to comment on that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to go in, I don't think now is the time to really go into detail, but it would be in my opinion, Susan, that it hasn't been board. Entirely board-driven or board-enabled, but it's just been that, the expectation for years and I think that it's just. At a point in time where we should. Uh, move forward with new expectations. Uh, Melissa.
So I'd like to comment to that because you keep saying that the town administrator should be doing the financial advising. And I think Susan, you can back me up on this because you made some calls, but that is actually the job of the treasurer and the accountant. That sheet that you got had nothing to do with me. That came from the bank and the treasurer. Okay, so you can't, and, and one of the issues that I know you and I had last year with the review process was that. During our meeting to go over some of the comments that you had. We asked you for more information on some things and you said yes and you were going to meet with us and you never did, so there was. Zero follow-up on it and I have to agree with the comments that have been made that you guys don't. Allow me to do my job. And with that said, if I can read the letter that I had written. Um, it might be a little, some of it may not make a whole bunch of sense because I actually wrote this after the eight twenty-nine meeting. I've been kind of adding to it here and there, but. Um, I wanted to thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight and that I respectfully feel that after eighteen years of dedicated service. I should be afforded the courtesy to know if the board will be proceeding with the suggestion made at the eight twenty-nine select board meeting to advertise the position to find someone new. Or if the board will be proceeding with the yearly evaluation and concurrently negotiating a new contract. At the nine five twenty-three select board meeting, a few comments were made with regards to the town administrator position. And why it is not being treated the same as other contracts in town, the library director and the chief of police. It was stated by board members that the TA is the CEO of the town and that this person essentially acts as the board on a day-to-day basis. Please let me explain why these are not accurate representations of the position as it is set up in Monterey. The definition of CEO is the highest ranking person in a company or other institution ultimately responsible for making managerial decisions. The current responsibilities of TA do not allow for this person to make any managerial decisions with regard to overall operations of the town. Certainly, this person makes decisions on purchasing supplies, helping direct staff, determining what color to make the transfer station stickers and similar matters. And provides oversight on a multitude of things, but CEO-like decisions such as hiring, firing, signing contracts. Accepting bids, approving policies, et cetera, are all made by the select board at their posted meetings. A comment was also made at the 8/29 meeting that the TA is the most important job in town. The TA may perform duties on a larger scale, but no job in town is more important than another. We all have different focuses and I would hate to have it put out there that the TA position is more important than, say, any of our public safety positions, outreach positions, or regulatory ones. And this is by no means a complete list, just a highlight. I have, I have a chart which I will give you, but in the chart below, it compares the two other contracted positions and that they are actually very similar. You guys have said that they were similar. Actually, the other two positions could be seen to have more authority than the town administrator. Thus, all three should be treated equally when it comes to contract renewals. In the, in the chart, you will see that the library director and the chief of police actually have more responsibilities and authority than I do when it comes to certain things. I'm almost done to my bearings. This is only a comparison of the contracted positions in town and I acknowledge the duties that are somewhere in the chart above are done on a larger scale, but the TA position, but no position is more important than the other and each is unique in its functions. If I were to add the other department heads that are not contracted, such as the director of operations, fire chief, community center director, you would see that they also share many of the same responsibilities, but on a smaller scale. With this information, I would ask that you treat the TA position the same as all of the other. Historical contracted positions have been treated, keeping consistency with our workforce, budgeting, and contracts, as was mentioned at the 9/19 select board meeting. Respectfully to me.
I also want to follow up on that. I, I made several phone calls. Just, I, I thought that Frank raised a really good point last week about how do we, the different functions of the TA position and how do we weigh them against each other? Because there's a lot of parts to that. And I was really curious about that. So I made some phone calls. I talked so far to three town administrators, Hatfield, Hinsdale, and Montague. Montague is, his title's town administrator, but in talking to him, he's essentially a town manager. They've given that position a lot more, for example, he has higher firepower. And he's also got an assistant town administrator. So there's two of them working there. They're a much bigger town, so it's not terribly surprising. There you have about 8,600 people. But even he says he's not equivalent to a CFO. And certainly both the Hatfield and Hinsdale folks I talked to said that, because that was part of what I was, I was trying to figure out what role financially does the TA, is the TA supposed to have? Like what does, and obviously it's going to vary from town to town, but I felt I wanted more clarity on that. The consistent answer I got was that they work closely with the accountant and the treasurer and the finance committees in terms of long-range planning and budgeting, that they're not, it's not a solo job. They're not essentially, they're not CFOs. I, I think that's important because I had the sense that it's important for us to have a clear expectation of what that role is, no matter who is in it. That needs to be clear. And I totally agree with you. The board needs to trust what's coming out of the TA's office. But I also think the board needs to have a clear perspective on what, what job that actually is.
Mickey Dervis?
I just want to speak to this repeated feeling that the library director and the library are on the same page as the town administrator. By state law, and I don't have, I had the paper, I think I've given probably everybody copies of it 19 times. The trustees are empowered by the state to handle all monies appropriated and gifted to the library. We are empowered to hire the director. It is our job to do that. And the director hires the staff. It has nothing to do with the select board or the town administrator or anybody else. We are an independent board and that is by state law. And so that, to equally what happens with Mark's position or the director of the library has nothing to do with what happens any other way. That's our decision how to handle it, whether we feel that he needed more hours and therefore went beyond the 20 hours. These are things that are on our plate, not on town halls. And so I really object to that being brought into the picture here. And I want everybody to understand that, the people sitting here and whoever's on the screen there, please understand that the library director is under the direction of the trustees of the library and no one else.
Ellen Coburn, it looks like you have your hand up.
I did, yes, thank you. I think that the, the number 18 years, which was mentioned tonight and a number of other times, is so very important. It's very important to the people of the town that I speak to, that I communicate with and that I know personally and through writing back and forth emails. It isn't something to toss off lightly, and I think the select board needs to think very hard about how it treats an employee who has been so loyal and has worked steadily and dedicated herself so long with so many issues that have come up and conflicts and difficulties. Many people in a position like that would not have continued to stick it out. And a large number of Melissa's supporters are very grateful. And, and I've mentioned that over and over. So whatever the board's position is on consistency and professionalism and all of those very clear terms of, from a manual, you need to remember that you're talking about a human being here and you're talking about an employee who has an effect on other employees. I think if, if you remember, Sean came to one of the earlier meetings and talked briefly, but very powerfully about, I think he said something like, you're treading a fine line here in, and I don't remember if he used the word, into deep water or into mud or into trouble or something like that, but his bottom line was speaking as someone who knows a lot of the other employees in town. This is not just a question of how it will affect Melissa or the individuals who support her and care about her and want to see her treated respectfully. And I take that word from Susan tonight because she used that word just now in talking about how you treat an employee. And I think you should treat an employee of two or three years respectfully as well, and I'm sure she does too. But especially, especially someone who has worked for 18 years for the town, how difficult it is to get people who will stay and who will do such difficult work under such difficult circumstances. So compassion and a caring attitude and a human, and, and a basic humanity toward one's employees must be factored in here. And when that is factored in, I totally support what Susan said, that you need to decide what the job entails. You need to put that out there as the job description and then you need to give this employee of 18 years and, and hopefully continuing, an opportunity to prove that she's up for, for the task because she has stuck it out so long and there will be so many people in this town who will be absolutely distraught and angry if she is treated disrespectfully. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
So I feel like we still don't have clarity on that process or even a way to get to a process. And that's, that's
So, so part of the issue right now is as it relates to the performance evaluation, the process for doing that, I think I've laid out at least once during this meeting, if not a couple of times, some of the acceptable ways which in part would depend on having a human resources director. I did speak briefly to only one of the consultants last, before last week's meeting. And I, it seemed like they would be willing to submit a proposal. That's only consultant I spoke into, but if the board feels strongly that it should have an HR director compile the forms, then we need to find one. And I think that, you know, I'd be happy to reach out to any of the, on the list and give them a phone call and say, we're really looking for someone and we're interviewing for a permanent position, but we might even interview for an interim position on a more immediate basis. If we don't have an HR director, then we'll do it with the board. And then we have to just have the discussion of whether we're going to do it in an open meeting or each board member deposits their own evaluation. So I guess, yeah, it's a little bit in flux to the extent that we don't know, we don't have clarity on an HR director. Sophia's last day is Tuesday.
You said that you weren't comfortable with keeping Sophia on on a contract basis for the TA's review. Is that correct?
As of this point, yeah. I mean, I have remaining questions for her. She said she was going to get back to me last Friday. But they didn't really even need a lot of time and between that and another ongoing, I would have, I would want those questions answered first. There were some irregularities from what I expected based on what I thought, based on what I thought we did last year. But I'm waiting to hear back from her. She said she needed something from town hall and she was going to find it physically in person on Friday, but it didn't, it didn't need to be, I didn't need anything physically from town hall. I just needed an answer from her.
Frank, how do you feel about having Sophia do the reviews with us?
I haven't done a review with her, so I don't have any experience. I've met with her maybe three times. I mean, there's the question of time. You were talking about the reviews we've done and that someone on the select board would summarize them.
Yeah, so there's, let's just summarize it in three processes. One is each board member submits an evaluation. They go to HR director. HR director makes a composite evaluation, that's the evaluation. Another process, if you don't have an HR director, is three board members submit an evaluation to a member of the board. Member of the board makes a composite evaluation. That's all public documents because it's open media, but you have your composite evaluation. Another one that I'm not 100% certain of, but I believe is legal, is three board members submit evaluations and that's that. And there's no discussion between amongst the board members. But if, I believe those are three of the most common or most acceptable. The first two I know are common and acceptable. The third one I'm not familiar with, but it seems like
But the third one seems rather awkward in this particular circumstance. Because without, without the board being able to discuss the various results of that, I don't see how we come to any decision.
So rule that out and you have the other two.
I, I would say number two. Somewhere we're along the line, no matter what, we all need to be on the same page as much as possible.
Would you be willing to do the composite evaluation, Frank?
My writing skills? You know, I, I'm still trying to get comfortable with your evaluation form because I tend to, my work history is that you evaluated someone, you know, you, you gave examples. If you couldn't, you couldn't grade them if you didn't have an example. So, you know, for me, you know, I've only been at it four or five months. It's just hard to say that on some of the stuff, I don't have the experience with it. I am scheduled to meet with Sophie and Melissa on Friday because Melissa rightfully has been asking for feedback. So, you know, I have my talking guideline, oh, this is good, this is whatever. And, you know, that's the way I was trained to do it. You know, you know, if you, if you want me to, you know, take the three, when we do the appraisals and summarize it, let me ask some questions. Doesn't, I mean, because I do the summary and then you guys have, you know, you have input on that? Or does she, does she get to see the three different appraisals? And then I'm summarizing it?
That's an interesting point. I mean, I, I think
I, I mean, what's the mechanics of it?
I think Frank, those are good questions. I think frankly, the best way to do it is to have an HR director. I think that's why town council said that's an excellent way to do it.
Yeah, but if, if you have an HR director, does it see, do we see what the HR director writes out?
You can do it either way.
I think you have to see it. You know, was it, someone told me, you, you did the appraisals last year, but neither of the three of you, Scott, or you two, nobody saw that there was appraisal, Susan.
That was each member submitted to the HR director who created a composite evaluation. That was at least the understanding and
Okay, but do, does Melissa get to meet with the three of you on the individual, but not as a group?
If I had questions, yes, which I did on some of them. And like I said, I mean, we literally, it was frustrating last year. One of the board members met with me. We had very good feedback. There were some things that I pointed out that were incorrect. They got corrected. And then there were some things that we had further discussion on and we expanded upon. The other member, same things. There were concerns about things being in there that weren't inaccurate and that we wanted specific examples for. And Justin, you agreed to come back with those and you never did. So I didn't really get a full chance to go over it with Justin. And when we wait, I guess when Sophia waited long enough and didn't have any response from Justin, she compiled them all three together and then I signed off on the compile.
But it's actually just
And I, I'm sorry, I made, I made a statement that said what I was disputing with Justin's and that, and I put in each of them here, but I asked for more clarification and was not provided that as of this date.
So, but for clarity, I actually did respond to Sophia and I explained why I wasn't coming in for a follow-up, follow-up meeting. Which, we don't necessarily need to go into the details now, but I didn't, I wasn't unresponsive. I explained why I wasn't going to go to a follow-up.
But you, you presented to some, to the HR manager a document when you, when you, when it came back to you, you said here,
Yeah, we had
these concerns were raised or whatever, and this is my response?
Well, we had an initial meeting between Melissa, myself, and the HR director. And Melissa requested backup evidence and more clarity on certain things and a follow-up meeting after that meeting. And I responded to Sophia about why I didn't, why I didn't think that was a good idea and why I wasn't going to go to a follow-up, follow-up meeting. And then, yeah, that's what happened.
So no additional information was provided. So there was no closure on that one. So no additional information was provided, so there was no closure on that one.
But we can set any process that we want.
Yeah, but I mean, well, you say, did Donna recommend, you know, having an HR person?
I think she would, she would also find it acceptable to have a member of the board compile a composite evaluation, should many boards. Do that and many boards don't want to do that, so they have an HR director compile a composite evaluation.
I think that the two issues with that is. Finding a board member that we all agree is suitable for doing it, but also it then becomes a public document. Normally, I would be concerned with that. In this particular case, I feel like ultimately, the board has to have. A conversation about the, our overall perspective. On the TA's job performance, right, and that's going to have to, it can't happen in individual meetings. I, I don't, perhaps you guys can think of a way around that, but I, I cannot. It seems to me like ultimately, we need to be able to have that group conversation. At whatever point.
No, I, I would, I would tend to agree, Susan. So what we can simply do is whether. We can, we make a composite evaluation or we use an HR director to make a composite evaluation, the board can simply discuss. That composite evaluation at a meeting.
I mean, I, I think it might behoove us to use an, an HR person. For the composite evaluate, composite evaluation. The trick. In this particular situation is that, that either we use Sophia or we have to find someone new and finding someone new. May, and may cause a lot of delay. And it will be someone not familiar with the situation, which I suppose could be helpful, or. Problematic. It would depend on the person in the situation. But that pushes our time, like I think we'd have to really get on it, and I'm not sure that we're. In a position to hire that quickly, are we? Do we have a?
Not permanent, not permanently, certainly Susan, but a potential on an interim. Basis. I think the fact of the matter is if the board's going to discuss a composite evaluation. Who creates it is not as. Critical.
So are you still saying that during that process? If there were questions, there would be individual meetings, or are you just saying that the three, that there would be absolutely no discussion?
There could be individual meetings, I mean, that we're not ruling that out of the process.
So I, I would just, I mean, Sophia is comfortable and knows the situation here, she did the process last year. I, I don't know what your concerns are with her, but I, I would, you know, respectfully request that you ask her to consult. On this, just because she's familiar with it and. I, I also want to add one other thing that I, I threw out there in my meeting with Susan is that. I'd like to do things a little differently this year and I would like to evaluate the three of you as well. Because I think part of the problems that we may have here is communication and understanding of certain things and. Maybe it might help you guys to see how I view your management style of meeting. Oh, she's sneezing.
I think.
You don't, you don't want to hear me copying, trust me.
I mean, we are almost at the two hour mark and I think. Unless Frank or someone else has something new to contribute, I think the gist of it is that we want. To create a composite evaluation, whether it's an HR director, a member of the board. And then discuss it as a board and move forward from there. There's definitely the potential for individual meetings. Between the town administrator and board members, potentially with. Other party or parties present. But in any case, board members would each submit an individual evaluation and that would be the first step. So we should.
Well, I mean, your choice is really down to Sophie and me alone.
Unless a board member did it.
Yeah, unless a board member did it.
Maybe Sophia can help alleviate my concerns, but I, she is. Yet to do so and I have. And I, I wouldn't feel comfortable before we can flush that out. Before I can flush out, I wouldn't, and maybe the rest of the board does, but.
So this is a strange question, but if, if we had on the table, I, I still think having an HR person do the composite. Is the best choice, but were we to have a board member doing it? If those documents are already becoming a public document. Ultimately, the board could look at all three independently. It doesn't necessarily have to be a composite, although I suppose we might want a composite as a final result. But. Once it's, once they're public documents. And it would have to be for one of the board members to be doing the composite.
The one member to make a composite, you'd actually have to share them, the individual ones first in a public meeting, because otherwise you're sharing each other's opinion. So you'd actually be sharing them twice, you wouldn't be sharing with just a composite, you'd be sharing the, the individual documents. Prior to any meetings. Whereas with the HR director, you wouldn't be, because they'd be going through the HR director and you would get the one final summary.
Exactly. So.
So I think a lot of this, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to finding an interim HR director. Maybe Sophia can alleviate my concerns, I'm concerned that she hasn't yet. In any case. We'll follow one of those two paths forward.
So because there really hasn't been any clarity for me, can I either ask, did you definitively set a timeline tonight? So I know, I mean, you've got me kind of in limbo here and, and, you know, I, I don't know if. It, it's really unfair to me and it's not, and it's, and it's. It's not doing well for my health and well-being.
The goal was to have all evaluations wrapped up by December fifteenth. I, I mean, in theory. We would work on the early end of that to submit individual evaluations in the first few weeks of November. For time to, for individual meetings, for a composite evaluation. But, and, and my other feeling is that we do, regardless of how we move forward, we do an evaluation. I mean, I think we set, we're doing annual evaluations and we do one, so.
I think there's no, there's less urgency if you are advertising it. You can do it December fifteenth if you'd like, if you're, if you're not keeping me in the position, there's no urgency to have mine done. Whereas if you are not advertising the position, there is an urgency to get it done.
I, I think that the, the goal would be to have individual evaluations in by. The first few weeks of November, I mean, we could set a date. Maybe it depends in part on if we find an HR director in the next couple of weeks. And then have individual meetings mid-November composite evaluation available by the end of November.
Melissa, you said you had some names that you got from your small town administrators group? Do we want to appoint one of the board members to begin the process of making calls? To try to find someone to serve in this role temporarily?
I did find that, that company out of Great Barrington and I mentioned to them, I didn't, I said, you know, we'd have to all go by the board, but we'd be looking for. A long-term consultant service potentially, but also maybe an interim to start with.
Do we want to look at more than one firm, or do we just want to take the first person?
No, I think we would want to look at more than one firm, but that might. Speed up the process of receiving proposals. I'm happy to work on that.
I mean, this is a perfect example of why wouldn't you just have me call them, I'm the town administrator, this is my job. You're stepping in again and making deadlines very unclear.
Well, we don't, the problem is we don't have any proposals. If you, if you want to.
Right, so I, I reached out, what, last week, I mean, you got to give people a chance to answer. We have one person that's interested in doing it.
If you want to make those calls, I think that's, that's fine. It's good even. Thank you for doing that.
That would be very helpful, Melissa.
I mean, regardless. Maybe even begin now that we have an evaluation form to fill it out.
I don't know, some kind of.
Background, background noise, Dawn.
So Melissa's going to reach out to some people to try to see if we can get some other potential. HR people to help us through the evaluation process. Some of whom may or may not also be suitable for a longer-term situation, correct?
Well, I think anyone who is suitable for short term would be suitable for long term, but we could use the. An interim, you know, if we would get, it would be great if we could get a few proposals. And maybe do some interviews and get some, and, and appoint an interim HR director potentially. But then we're not signing ourselves up for a year-long. Contract, and it could actually, the interim appointment could be, you know, a continuing evaluation. But the process starts the same regardless of where the forms go, right? Board members fill them out. So that can start immediately. And so I think that's just the start of the process, and then if we find an HR director, we do, and if we don't. We can consider Sophia, maybe I will have to find the right avenue to voice my concerns.
You should try to do that.
What's that? Sophia? I did, yeah, I did. No, I did. Reach out to her and I didn't get answers. And then it was, I was supposed to get answers on Friday and I didn't get them.
So would it be fair that you guys could have a week to do all of yours and so that yours are at least done by the time you decide who the HR person is or not?
I don't know if I can do it in one week, but in two, I could. So begin, what day is it today?
October twenty-fourth.
How about? Wednesday, November first, have your evaluations completed.
That's a week.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm bad at reading calendars.
The seven, maybe two weeks from today, the eighth, yeah.
Wednesday, November eighth.
Sure.
Does that work?
Yeah, no, that would work.
Okay, so. Form should be completed by Wednesday, November eighth. TBD on exactly how we proceed from there, but that's the, that's the process regardless. And that's about as, I think, as quick of a turnaround as we can get. And that would certainly set us up well to complete it in the, in the timeframe that we set. Okay, everyone will, will work on that. Melissa will work on soliciting proposals for HR directors and maybe you can mention. That there's potentially, potential for interim appointment, maybe that can get. Here's moving. Next item of business is the evaluation forms for employees and department heads. Mickey, Jarvis, I see you here.
Yeah, I just had a couple of. Things that I noticed. Just three little things, the form is attached there.
So this is free of?
It says, right on the. First question's here, if you look at that here.
The problem is we afford it at once.
Now they're not, no.
No, they haven't been.
Well, all right. Where it says quality of work, it says freedom from.
You already took that out, Mark, let us know about that.
Oh, I didn't.
Changed that one. I thought if we could put a white space here. Judgment would move to the next page, because I'm looking at this, judgment of what? You know, and it just put a white space and that goes in with its own questions. And then my third one is on cooperation, besides a willingness to work harmoniously with others. I would like to see willingness and ability to interact with public in a friendly and helpful manner. Because everybody gets to work with the public and they should be working with the public and. Be willing to and have the ability to interact. I mean, I've never had a problem with anybody. But it should be understood that they are supposed to, not only just working with their own group. So that's just what I.
I'm just trying to think if every department head works for the public and I think they do.
I, I'm talking about every employee. I'm not talking about just department heads, I'm talking about every single employee in this town. Should be nice to the public. I mean, I've stopped hiring departments when they're working on my road and asking questions and I've never had a problem. I had to talk to Jim right before he was getting the job, creating my road. And he was very nice, he answered my question. So that, that was all I had.
What does the board think about adding that to the cooperational force? This, what does the board think about adding that?
I think there's, I have no problem with that.
I don't either, it's not a bad idea.
And willingness to interact with public in a friendly and helpful way, yeah, you can do that. So, any other comments on this? Other than, other than those changes, I assume there were no other proposed changes?
Oh, yes, I have one.
I didn't have any on the board.
Yeah, and that, it would be completed by the town administrator and the department head. Then I believe. Department heads will be instructed of the November first to December fifteenth timeline. To review their employees and themselves. With the goal of wrapping it up. So that would begin shortly. Are there any other comments?
No, that one looks good to me.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, and Susan did too. Any other comments or questions? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And so that's approved. So Melissa, we'll sign that, please, thank you. Human Resources Director. I have to say that with the town meeting and other items, I do not get to review this, this week. But this is being what we're using for soliciting proposals, right? And we're not, we're not actively advertising for an employee. Right? Does anyone think that we should?
I would go with the consultant first.
Yeah.
Yeah, as would I. I think that we can't, we don't need a full-time person, and I think trying to find a part-time person is going to be fraught with difficulty.
Yeah, I would. I would concur. So basically, we have this job description, but it's not going to be a job description. It's going to be hopefully reflected in a scope of services in a, in a proposal. Which is good. Thank you, Melissa, for following up with those people.
I think the one thing that we need to think about with respect to the HR director and brought, sort of brought to the fore by some comments Sophia has made that when we initially structured that job description, we had the HR director answering directly to select word, which at the time I thought made a lot of sense. But from a realistic standpoint, talking to her, it's been very awkward because she has too many bosses. I don't know how to resolve that problem. I think, you know, in a lot of towns, HR does answer to one person and certainly in dealing with the hierarchical system that makes things a lot simpler. I don't know how we could fix that. But it's something to consider, and it needs to be in the forefront of our mind as we're going forward with this.
I think that's, that's a good point. When it comes time to negotiate a contract or, you know, accept proposals, that's a good point. Treasure contract, so I just put the scope of services directly into the contract, the day-to-day functions, and substituted more of a vague list for a more specific list with references to Mass General Law that's, was actually just produced by the, by DLS, I think, or DR, but I think it was DLS. The state in one way or another. I think Sarah had some changes.
She just had the one in item three of those. I took it, let's see, to take charge of out of there.
Can you repeat that, Melissa?
So she asked the, on the first bullet point in number three, that take charge of be removed because she doesn't actually keep that. It's between myself and the clerk.
Yeah, I, I, I think that makes sense. We never really got a figure. We asked for a figure from her and she wanted a figure from us.
For a second? Yeah, she wanted to negotiate.
But we never, we asked for a figure.
This is only different from 30, it's not even.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. I don't like still in section four for an average of 7.5 hours per week. I feel like the job function should be completed, but if it's a sticking point and no one else has reservations, we can delete it.
I mean, is that what she's been contracted before?
Yes, it's been in her contract before, but it's at $39,750 a year. It's in the neighborhood of $100 an hour. And I feel like for that money, the town should just be guaranteed the completion of the job functions.
But is she accomplishing all the functions?
She is, and she's actually put in well over seven and a half hours, but she wants it to make it known that, that, you know, it's on her own dime. She's not.
Anyways, so I, any other comments? Otherwise, I'm fine approving it with the one change that Sarah made.
I second the motion.
Yeah, I, I moved to approve the contract with the one change being removed, take charge of.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion comments? We'll call a vote.
Aye.
All right. And yes, for me, so that's the unanimous approval of the contract. Do you want us to assign?
I'm gonna have to clean it up and not be in the box for the sun.
And she'll be in tomorrow, maybe she could?
She won't be.
Oh, the someone from Mass.
They're just stopping to pick up.
So we'll sign it, yeah, okay. Town administrator items. Yeah, though you can do that.
Just find, do you want to address town council's response to the public official's liability, just so that it's out there, it can chat down?
Yeah.
Whether you want to read it or?
Sure, I didn't, I didn't even really. First and all, you know, I'm listening, this is quite interesting. First in all my years as a town council, I've never had a claim asserted against an assessor for his or her role inside a tax rate or for ruling out applications for abatements or adjustments. The assessors don't do any of the tasks under item six, so they don't need to worry about that exclusion. There's an important distinction between an assessor's personal exposure and insurance coverage. Regardless of whether there is insurance coverage, the town will be responsible for any damages if such a claim were to be brought against an assessor per General Law, Chapter 258, Section 10. There's no personal liability to the assessor for doing her job. Per Section 2, the complaint it can only collect against the town when the public employee is acting within the scope of her office or position. Since the town is required to indemnify the employee, the employee is not personally liable. I've never heard of a claim for money damages against an assessor. I don't think purchasing a much more expensive policy covers such unlikely claims as warranted. I'm fine with it. I don't, I'm not convinced by the fact that she's never seen a claim asserted against an assessor. I feel like they need the guarantee that they won't be held personally.
Well, the, yeah, but you got the Mass General Law where you say that, what Scott was saying to me was that if they were sued, they would have to hire their own attorney. It would be like under the liability insurance. But you, if you, you know, you would eventually be reimbursed, but they're the ones putting the money out for the lawyer, which is reasonable legal fees. I don't, I don't know.
So I, I, I mean, I think at this point, we'll share that with them.
Well, Melissa, it's been shared.
And.
There was no response from them then.
So if they are satisfied with the indemnification, then I think we're fine. But we'll have to see, if there's still remaining concerns and there's validity to them, I don't want a situation where no one's willing to serve on the board of assessors because they're afraid of personal exposure, if that's a valid concern. So let's just see, my opinion would be to just see if they're comfortable with that explanation. And then if not, maybe we need to, we'll go from there. But if they're comfortable with it, then it's fine.
Seems reasonable.
Who would want to be on board of assessors if you're not, you could be?
Oh, I think also the tax policy, isn't it?
It, it certainly doesn't sound like it's something that's happening with any frequency though, Justin.
No, but I think there was a case cited, right?
I put that in my email to Dawn, and she didn't.
There was a case cited where assessors were sued, I believe.
It was a personal, I believe, acquaintance of the person that brought this up. So I mean, it's nothing verified that this was an actual.
Oh, really?
It's too late.
Right. It could be one of those telephone rings, but I'm not saying, there's not validity to it, but none of us have actually checked to see if there was an actual case.
I thought there, yeah. Just one other item under unanticipated business, the Lake Garfield Warden Group, namely Michael Germain, is looking for the board to remove the drawdown portion of the order of conditions for Lake Garfield from the order of conditions and continue with the rest of the order of conditions for lake management, including data-assisted suction harvesting and mechanical weed prevention, among, I think, other programs. Does anyone have, if we don't have any questions about that, we can just sign off.
Does that mean there would be no drawdown allowed?
No. I'll read it. The town honorary requests the removal of the portion of the Lake Garfield order of condition referring to the drawdown at the dam. We would like to move forward with the rest of the program for lake management laid out in the order of conditions. We intend to amend this order of condition in the near future to address the drawdown. Please just let us know if you have any questions. Please feel free to contact us if you wish to discuss this further. So I think the goal, as I understand it, and initially I thought they were going to do two orders of conditions, and I guess they ended up being wrapped up into one. But for right now, move forward with the other items on it. And then amend it for this particular requirements about the drawdown.
Right, and that one doesn't start till next year, right? So it doesn't, it doesn't prevent a highway from doing the drawdown this year?
November 1st, straight, is what I've heard. Double, we can, I think Michael has been working with the scientific, but yeah. I mean, the Concom already posted a meeting to discuss this, right? I would move to approve the letter of the Concom.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Aye.
And yes, for me, so that's the unanimous approval. Is there any other unanticipated business?
Computers. We met with Mari. We did a, a conference call today with the QBS on upgrading it, because you signed that contract in December of last year.
That's why I wait for boards to vote before I sign something.
Well.
I think we did vote on it.
Yeah, and we, Melissa got a proposal on, you know, the whole network and the server. Roger and I are gonna, we'll have to get with Melissa and meet again. He's come up with the questions, a bunch of questions about the first proposal, which will allow us to sort of start giving it down and understanding what we want. You know, it's, there's just, there's a lot of options out there right now. We're just gonna keep working.
I don't think that proposal could maybe include the server.
It doesn't, and you know, we had a long conversation after that. Did we want it server because of what the, you know, the SQL they get for the server that they need? So we, we just need to have more conversations. I don't, did you see Roger's email? He had 12 questions about that proposal from Mari.
I did, I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, so he's gonna, when Roger and I talked a little bit after we did the conference call, you know, we're, we're gonna have to get with him, get back and have another meeting on how we're gonna address these issues. So we can narrow the scope down and give proposals. Because there's a lot of things now, but what they basically proposed is that we have just, everything that we would go through their building, we just run a wire connection to their.
To Wally's building?
Wally, yeah.
Wait, what do you mean?
Everything that you have would be for, everything when they, someone sent an email, it's gonna go through their security. It's gonna go through.
Over the internet?
Yeah, over there.
Not a specific cable running from here to Wong, that or wherever. That's what I thought you were saying.
It'd be through the internet.
The string, I'm gonna run it tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
With tin cans on it.
Yeah. So that, they proposed that, and good thing we had Roger. He, he had a lot of good questions.
But here's my other thought is at some point, can we just get an apples to apples so we can get a feel for the numbers and the offerings and then just move, move forward?
You don't want to see the numbers right now.
So they can just, so we can just move forward with one or the other and.
I think, I think you're making our role more simple.
No, move, and then they advise us on what to do. And you can have Roger work with them and people who know things work with them so that they're not advising us in ways that are in, so that we have a check on, on their advice, but we don't need to have everything figured out before we hire Wally or John Shannon or some, right? Wouldn't part of them working for us be to help figure us, figure that out?
I, I think you have, I don't think it's quite that simple.
Yeah, it's not that.
Quite simple, you know?
One decision leads to a decision that could be split either way, so I think we need to decide what we want in a whole and, right?
Yeah.
Because everything we've talked about, and Roger's not comfortable recommending everything. So he's, you know, he's kind of given a bird's eye view, but.
Right, and he's been talking to the people he uses to work with that need him. But you know, you say we need a server, but then when you talk on it, you need the SQL language to do the database stuff on the server, then you add cost. I mean, it's another thing you have to maintain. So do you just go and host it in the cloud?
I'm assuming you're talking about Mari's.
Yeah. But, and then she, then we want to take a look at, do we, you know, do we go to the one system, you know, which you use for the account?
So is the main question whether we're gonna have a physical server in town hall going forward?
One of them.
Are there other questions?
Well, there are other questions. You could provide the firewall, the router and the server here to maintain that. Or you could go over the internet and you go through like Wally, everything's directed to them, they're running, or even, not everything, they would do our firewall, they would do, you know, they would run everything virus protection before it came here. So you're not worrying about a router, you're not worrying about the firewall. And then you could say that, okay, the softwares we have, the software we have, like what Mari uses would be hosted in the cloud. And we talked to them today. Roger talked to them, if we had this setup, could we still get through you? And they said, yes, that will all work. People do that. So we have to, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be expensive. But, you know, one of the questions they proposed was 50 users. We don't have 50 users. So, you know, what would the price for 25 users? But, you know, usually you don't sell them the exact amount. You know, I might sell them in increments of five or something like that. So.
And the other part of it is that, like, the reason that proposal was sent to me was he was suggesting that we apply for the Community Compact IT grant and that this was a similar proposal to what they're doing for another town.
Roger was saying this?
No.
Wally? Do we get to only do one community compact a year?
No, there's the IT grant, but you can do each of the different categories.
Okay.
It's what I've been told.
Is that like the best? I don't need to get too into the weeds here, but that's a separate from the grant with the insurance company?
Yes.
That we previously talked about?
Yes, which we still haven't applied for yet.
Okay.
Because again, we need to know what we're.
We have to do, I, I will, I'll write an email in the morning, get a meeting here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, because I'm away after Wednesday next week.
So how long would you anticipate before we have proposals that we could?
Well, we have Wally. I mean, we can give Wally, I think Roger had a lot of good questions, which I think they could. Roger had a lot of good questions, which I think they could sharpen their pencil on, we could, that would give us a cost for doing it one way. You know, we're, basically, we don't have anything there. And then the second, based on that, we could come up. This is what we want a proposal here that we want to, he did a network back then with the firewall and router. So, um, I'll get, we'll see if we can get a meeting early next week and keep it going.
Okay, it sounds like all over my head, so I'll leave it to. Okay, but it's good to know things are.
The other thing we might want to talk about, Dylan, Roger and I talked about is consolidating all the IT stuff in the one budget.
Oh, yeah, because right now some departments have your own.
Doing it this way, you would have a good picture. I don't know if we can do it this year, but maybe the next year we should probably.
The reason that we separated is so you see what it actually costs to like run the assessors department or run the tax collectors department rather than lumping it all into.
Yeah, but then you get, but when you're, if you're paying maintenance for a router switch, everybody does that, you know, there's different ways to look at it, but. There should be a conversation about it.
Okay, it's good updates. Um, school building, uh, you know, I just saw that in minutes and how many. We're still working on, right, that in the.
I've got some preliminary numbers I'm waiting to hear if it includes the lifting of the electrical wires or not.
Thank you. Um, and then maybe in, 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 well, simultaneously, we could get. Estimated sale price or something. Me, I, you know, that, that might be a range, but then, but, but then you get to a point where you can put it out to. For public opinion and you might have a range, but it's better than just saying sell the building.
Well, I think you should.
Move the building. It, it might be move the building, we don't know for sure, but it's gonna be in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand dollars. Sell the building, we think we're gonna get somewhere from a hundred thousand to four hundred thousand, and it's a range, but. I'm just shooting from the head, but you have, but look, everyone's criticism of the question, the way it was asked in the master plan survey was. People were answering, but with no financial.
No background. It's easy to say you want to restore it, but what are you doing?
Yeah, so let's get some numbers and do it that way. Okay, that's unanticipated business, I think. Comments and questions from the public?
I do have one.
Mickey, there it is.
Okay. So this is just. I got this paperwork on this policy and, and I.
Which policy, Mickey?
Well, I'm gonna tell you, because I didn't understand what it meant until I read for a while, which I didn't read the whole thing, I just read about that much. Town of Monterey acceptable use policy, but it doesn't say use of what in the title. So I just think the title of it should be something else, because it's, has to do with. Computers and network systems and whatever else, but acceptable use policy doesn't say use of what? Just my thought.
So we have been calling at a certain point acceptable use IT policy, but. It is ultimately gonna end up in our IT policies. Which will have.
Actually, we ended up adding it to the handbook, cause I'm talking with Sophia, she thinks that all these new ones you're adding, we should just put in there. She doesn't recommend the appendix, so it's cause a lot of people don't understand them and won't actually go look at them, so she's recommending just adding.
If you put them in the handbook, some of them they have to sign off on at the end.
Well, but they're gonna sign the handbook.
Right.
My only problem with that is we have some people that have to sign the handbook, maybe we don't. I thought there might be some people that have to sign the handbook, but don't have to sign the acceptable use IT policy, like maybe a transfer station attendant.
They're aware that we have one.
Yeah. Um, if we had IT policies, I would want them all in one place. You know, here's your IT policies and you have to sign off on that as well. But if we want to put them in the handbook, that's fine too. It's just gonna double the length of the handbook with computer stuff.
Someday, the IT, uh, transfer station person will be working on a computer in town hall and, you know, they didn't follow the policy and.
Yeah.
They can say, hey, you signed it and it was there.
Well, I don't know.
You shouldn't be watching porn on this. They do move over to the highway department to use the bathroom or whatever, so you know, maybe they.
All right.
Log on to Jim's computer and.
So that was my only thing, I just thought it was confusing that it didn't have.
I tell you, most times, there's only one guy there now.
Um, before we pack up, we, we could, we could deal with the minutes.
We only have the twenty.
You only have eight twenty, but we should do them because it's illegal by a month.
And I didn't have your changes and I gave you those, so that's, I just sent them to you, Susan, with the, have Justin's changes in it.
Um. Because it's tomorrow, spring morning, we'll come like nine.
Okay, well, we're at eight nine.
I don't wanna wake you up.
Well, I'm up at three, so.
Yeah, but just want you to go back to sleep after that. Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you, Mickey.
I'm, I'm fine with the eight twenty-eight minutes you just sent me, Melissa.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, motion approved. The minutes of eight twenty-eight has been handed.
Second to motion.
Is there any discussion? Call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval of those minutes.
I'm gonna have. The other ones, because I, I, I'm out of juice, guys. I've got nothing left.
No, you're very right, Susan. I was gonna, you're right on track. You're correct. Before we adjourn, I just want to say, um, I hope that in. After last night's special town meeting, let's not get into it in depth, but I'm hoping that we can wrap that up maybe with a discussion on our select board. If there's any expectations or things that we want moving forward and maybe that we can make clear to. The school district. Today.
I don't know what happened to the camera, sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
Second to motion.
Is there any, you know, we'll vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes, unanimous, meeting adjourned at eight thirty-seven PM.
Bye.
Start the ball meeting.